Good evening, everyone. With the time being six o'clock PM on Tuesday, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order. And we are holding this meeting via Zoom due to the inclement weather that we experienced here in Webster today. So the first order of business is the discussion and approval of the minutes from the January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. Is there any discussion around those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
They're moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, Lori, would you please poll the committee?
Member Naparada?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is a superintendent's report. Good evening, Mrs. Prangeli.
Good evening, thank you. It's nice to see everybody tonight. A little different doing this from the comforts of your own home for sure. So patience as we get settled in and start going through Zoom meeting here. The first item I have for you is a personnel update. We have a few new hires that I'm happy to announce. We have Brian Federuzic. He is a Webster Middle School paraprofessional. We have Jesse Brusso, who is a Park Ave Elementary ABA. And then I'm really happy to announce we have hired a new curriculum director. Her name is Debbie Rivera. Ms. Rivera comes to Webster with twenty-eight years of experience in teaching instructional coaching and administration experience. She has served as a special ed administrator since two thousand and sixteen. She was currently employed at Assabit Valley, and she's contributed to the development, support, and implementation of programming for middle school and high school students. She has supervisory background of teachers. She's written IEPs, implemented plans, meetings, among multiple other responsibilities and duties. She's also designed, presented, and facilitated professional development workshops in the central Mass region for teachers and in other regions of Massachusetts as well. Some of her professional development has practiced around differentiation and instruction, incorporation of twenty-first century skills, tiered assessment strategies, and instructional practices. Debbie will be starting with us on March sixth, and we look forward to welcoming her here in Webster. I know she's gonna come in and hit the ground running. She's very excited to be here. Moving on, we do have a couple of resignations. We have Martin Stipalovich. He is our Webster Middle School custodian. And we had a recent resignation of Rachel Friedman, who is a special education teacher at Webster Middle School. Are there any questions about personnel? No, okay, moving on. Under instructional leadership, this on Friday, February second, we had another half-day PD across the district. I included in your packet some professional development grids that were completed by Jill Chapdeline before she left. As you can see, we, that is one thing we do very well in Webster. We have provide a wide range of professional development across the district for our staff. I do want to give a special shout out to Sherri Hare and Kathy Barris, who pinch-hit for us on that day. You know, Ryan was a little short staff because he had staff with illness, and they stepped up and they presented to our high school gen ed teachers about our continuum of student engagement. And I put that in your packet. It's a document that talks about student engagement and resources. And I thought it was interesting, and I wanted to share it with you because this is something that we have continued to talk about throughout the district when we go through our walkthroughs and we're looking and we're talking to staff and we're giving staff feedback about what engagement looks like and what do we see as we're walking through. So they did a wonderful job and appreciate their willingness to step up and provide that professional development. And I thought it was well-received and much appreciated by the high school staff. Next, we have access testing. And I'm gonna keep my reports tonight a little brief because I know we have a lot going on later on in the meeting with budget presentations and stuff. So if I'm going too fast or you have questions, please ring the bell and I'll hit the brakes a little bit. We have finished up access testing across the district. The window was initially supposed to be closing this week, but the state recently sent out a message saying that due to inclement weather, they were gonna stay open till the end of February. But I really wanna give Dr. Mackay and all of the ELL teachers across the district a big shout out. This is no small task in getting this completed. It's a lot of scheduling, it's a lot of time, and it's a big commitment. And I appreciate their support because you wouldn't know it how much is involved, but it seems like a seamless process across the, across the district. And that's because of all the hard work they put in behind the scenes. So I think we are done. I double-checked today and we have completed. So thank you for that. I know it's a big task. And thank you to our teachers, or really our ELL teachers for taking on that work and successfully getting that done. Any questions about that? Next, I wanna mention our curriculum renewal. So we've talked about this and part of our budget process and things that are upcoming. We are currently going through a couple curriculum renewals. These are things that Jill talked about early in the year. We are still continuing with them. We have a K through six math curriculum review going on between the elementary and the middle school. They are looking at three different math programs, and they will be piloting and coming forward with a recommendation. We are also doing a science curriculum review at the high school, and they are also reviewing three curriculums. And that work has been continuing on throughout the year and will continue on through the next few months. And then we'll come back with a recommendation on how we wanna move forward. As you know, it's important that we are looking at HQIM, which is high-quality instructional materials, and looking at what we're doing now and, you know, how these programs compare to what we've been doing and how they could improve our instruction and what we're doing across the district. So I wanna thank the teams for working on that. And we will be bringing back more information as we work through that process. On Friday, February ninth, I attended the CMC board meeting. I wanted to let you know that they have started their budget process and are working through, just like all of us. The collaborative is in good financial shape this year, and they have been over the past couple of years now. And they are looking at a small increase for out-of-district tuition. Right now, they're just looking at two to three percent, which is great news for us. As we've seen with our private tuitions, we've had big increases over the past two years. We had fourteen percent last year, and we have more than a five percent this year. So keeping those costs down and us partnering with those collaborative helps us financially. And they have a great program to support our out-of-district tuition students. And next, I will be starting some student-focused groups as we continue looking at student engagement across the district. I also believe it's important to get the perspective from our students and how they feel about their own education. So I'm looking to put a couple of groups together, one at the middle school and one at the high school. And my hopes is to learn a lot about how they feel about the supports that they're getting from us and what their education looks like and how we can get that dialogue going and help to improve their experience here in Webster. And lastly, under instructional leadership, over February break, we are running a small attendance recovery academy at the Webster Middle School. As you know, we've been looking at student attendance across the district. And actually, they've been looking at student attendance across the state and across the nation as a whole. Massachusetts has come out with an initiative in providing some support to districts for, to have small camps or opportunities for students to come in and recoup some of that attendance, make up days, and also do have the potential to make up some work and maybe do some additional projects. So we have a small group we're piloting for February break at Webster Middle School. We've been in contact with some families, reaching out personally to see if we can get them to come in. And we look forward to reporting back on that after break. Any questions on instructional leadership? Okay. On other updates, I don't know if you've had the opportunity to drive by our offices recently, but if you have, you would have noticed a white bus in the back with some green labeling on it. And that is one of our two multi-function student activity buses. Believe it or not, we purchased them back in August of two thousand and twenty-two. One of them was recently delivered, and the second one should be arriving shortly. So we are truly excited about that. As you know, with the shortage in supplies all over the country through COVID, it has taken some time to get these built and delivered, but they're finally starting to catch up a little bit on that. And so we hope to put these to use soon. We have in your packet that we'll be talking about later, a policy that'll govern the usage of the bus. And these fourteen-passenger buses could be used for field trips, small events, it could be used for eighteen-to-twenty-two program. So we're looking forward to getting these on the road, getting them up and running. We will be creating some training videos and some procedures and checking in and checking out. But I think they're gonna, I've already had multiple requests from our staff, like what do we need to do to get to use the bus? Because there's so many times for small sports, like maybe golf or our National Honor Society who are going on trips or anything across the district, our eighteen-to-twenty-two going out to different programs, we can take them ourselves. It just can't be a set route like every day, it can't be the same route. So I'm excited about that. I think it's gonna be a great benefit to the district. I think that second bus, once we get it in, I expect to see them out on the roads and being utilized to help support our students. So I am very excited about that. Long time coming, and it's, it's nice to finally see these things starting to happen. And that concludes my report unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Mrs. Prangeli. Any questions or comments from the committee? Well, hearing none, the next item on the agenda is this business manager report. Good evening, Mrs. Kontos.
Good evening, hi, everyone. Great to see everyone together like this. I feel like it's the expanded version of the Brady Bunch. Let me jump into giving you some updates on the BHS renovation project. Good news, the school building committee did award the contract to Break Builders of Marshfield at our last meeting, and those contracts have been executed. We held a kickoff meeting on January third, which included our OPM Colliers, Landsberg, the architect, as well as our new general contractor, Break Builders. In that meeting, we had a pretty robust agenda covering, you know, everything from logistics to key things that have been on parking lots that need to be talked about. So a full run-through of that was done. We did include a copy of that agenda in your packet if you wanted to look at it, but it was certainly very detailed and thorough. Break continues to mobilize all of their subcontractors. So they are keeping Desiree and Lori very busy with quarry checks and getting all the contractors ready to come on board. A lot of the site prep is going on as we speak. As the superintendent mentioned, if you've driven by and you saw the bus, maybe this week you saw some fencing going up. So the fencing is being installed around the construction zone. Right now, it's being put up in some areas with temporary fencing, and then other areas will have those poles permanently installed. But that activity is in progress, as well as looking at the development of a safety plan around this fencing around the building. So that's been a very detailed conversation. Some of the demolition activities are scheduled to start this week. It was targeted for tomorrow, although we did hear in our status meeting today that it may not actually start tomorrow. They'll start some beginning mobilization, but that did involve some asbestos abatement activities. And as a result, we are required to notify every one of that. So a notification was included in the superintendent's newsletter. It's been posted on the district website. And it was also communicated at a recent staff meeting at the high school. So all of those notifications have happened. In addition to the staff meeting, a couple members of the project team were introduced to the entire staff. The staff is also reminded that we have an online form and a mechanism for asking questions or raising concerns. And so that form was shared again with the staff to encourage them that if something comes up during the very long duration of this project, they do have a mechanism in which they can submit that. Our onsite project manager will be monitoring that forms, bringing any of those issues to our weekly meeting with the architect, the GC, and our OPM. So we will continue to monitor that. The other activity that will happen this week is a notification will be distributed to neighbors about the start of the project. The project manager intends to go door-to-door and drop those in mailboxes or hand them to people if they happen to be around. And then the last major activity that will be taking place, actually, there's two. A chairlift will be going in during school vacation break. We talked a bit about that at the last meeting. That's going in the lobby outside of the cafeteria. The majority of that installation should be done during school vacation week. They do expect potentially the inspection and some small other activities to bleed into the following week. We had some conversations today about the timing of when that work would happen, and we're asking for that to happen after school hours. And then the other thing that I didn't mention in the notes, but there are also some temporary stairs being put in right outside where the main office was because those stairs that are there will no longer be accessible because they'll be part of the construction zone. So lots of activities going on. Ryan and I, as well as Gina or Mo, when they're available, will also be attending weekly meetings with all of the parties involved. And certainly, they'll reach out to us on an ad hoc basis if, if something comes up as they're moving along on the project. Let me just pause, that's a lot of information. I just wanna see if anyone has any questions. Or Ryan, if there's anything else you wanna share that you think maybe I didn't include.
No, you did wonderful. It's a lot to remember. Definitely a lot to remember, but we are excited about the work as well as capitalizing on how much it is to remember, but we are excited for sure.
You know, I'll close with, certainly doing a renovation project surfaces challenges that you don't have in a brand-new build, right? There's so much more with respect to the logistics and the timing of things. And so I'm really pleased to see how thoughtful everyone is being as we think about what needs to happen, how we need to think about it. Everyone's been very thoughtful of that. Okay, if there's no questions, I think we can move on. If that's okay with you, Ms. Siddiqui, with an update on our fiscal year twenty-four budget?
No questions or comments from the committee about the building project? No, all right, yep, take it away, Ms. Kontos.
I'll say one last thing. If you hear anything, you guys can also use the form if you want to, to submit questions and concerns.
Great, and we'll, we'll be sure to direct people to that. Yeah, it's a good resource if we hear anything in the community that we can direct folks to as well. Thanks for bringing that.
One of the things I think we'll also be doing, we did talk about it, we just haven't designed it yet, is potentially creating another link externally that people could use. So if neighbors or someone wants to do it, they can actually use the form. Or we're also gonna let them know where they can come right to the trailers. The two trailers will be in the grassy area of the central office parking. So they'll be right in the middle there. And you'll see that part of that parking lot is no longer available. It's part of the construction zone. So half of the team in the central office area, including the custodians and the cafeteria folks are parking in the student/teacher parking lot by the tennis courts. So feel free to stop in. Stop in the OPM one, but not the GC. All right, let me walk you through some key updates relative to where we are with our LEA budget this year. Now, as you know, the majority of our budget is made up of salaries, right? That's, you know, close to eighty percent of the entire budget is upwards to salary. So based on where we are in the budget, I'm gonna focus in on the salary area. So for the staff that are paid with twenty-six pays, we're forty percent used in terms of the budget, and we're through forty-six percent of the period. So we're really running slightly under budget, which is not a surprise, given the vacancies that we've had and the attrition. And you're gonna see that as I move through the other areas. So staff that are on thirty-nine pays, we are forty-nine percent utilized of the overall budget. And for them, we're about fifty-nine percent through of their, their payments. And then in the fifty-two week, folks, we are fifty-nine percent used and we're sixty-two percent through the budget. So overall, salaries and other line items and expenses included, we're fifty-seven percent utilized at this point and about fifty-nine percent of the way through the fiscal year. So no concerns in terms of how the budget is running. However, if you did thumb through the actual report that I gave you from UNICEF, you'll see some areas where we are hot and we're running higher. On some of those areas, let me call a few of them out for you, just as examples. You may see in there, for example, the vandalism that happened at Webster Middle School. We actually charge that to a line item that's specifically used for vandalism, but we don't typically budget in that line item. So that's one example of an area that's higher. There are some areas where we just purchase early in the year and expend those a little sooner than others. We have a few in there that should have been charged to a grant that will require a journal entry. And then we have some that fluctuate from year to year. So we are doing a full analysis on those line items to determine where corrections are either needed from a journal entry standpoint or where transfers might be needed that would require us to come to you to approve those transfers. So that full analysis is underway, but the good news is, is we are slightly under budget overall and a little less under budget in the salary area. So let me just pause and see if there's any questions about that or any particular things that you saw that you want me to follow up on and get back to you. All right, I think that was a good silent pause, giving people a chance to get off mute. And I think that's all I have for you for now. I'm coming back later.
Thank you, Ms. Kontos, for your updates. Doesn't sound like there's any questions or comments from the committee at this point. So I know that we will see you again shortly. And the next item on the agenda is a principal's report. And joining us this evening from Bartlett High School is Mr. Collins. Good evening, Mr. Collins.
Good evening, everyone. I hope that you had a safe and warm snow day. I will jump right in. I know that we have overlapping things whenever the high school principal and the rep host on the same evening. So I will move quickly through mine. I did share with you a handout, as I normally would bring one with you in your email. But I will start just very briefly with empty bowls and just so that I can say a thank you, because I know Mohammed is going to jump into this a little further. I just wanna publicly say thank you to our visual arts department, Mr. Harrington and Ms. Gillenhammer, for all of their hard work. And they did raise quite a bit of money, over twenty-five hundred dollars, but I will let Mohammed jump into a lot more details about that. The next two items I've kinda combined into my handout. So if we, I don't know, I won't share, I'll just highlight because as Mo said, I know that we have lots to get through. But I did share this with you in a statement for my staff as we work in our teams throughout the building to utilize our data. We begin our school year with a huge focus on our district initiative, which you're very well aware of, has a particular focus on our MLL students and our special education students. So those are allowing us to really focus on those subgroups to increase data and to look at student gain. We wanted to capitalize on the gaps, so we started work throughout my handout. And you'll see when you can go back through it, work within our strategic master schedule that allows us to hone in on the remedial needs of students as we saw through some of our data last year as we presented. We had students, you know, two-plus years behind in terms of our iReady data and our other collection of data throughout the previous school year. And in tackling that, we, of course, jumped into more time on learning. We've really put a focus on that, as well as a huge focus on switching from, you know, common planning time to the research-based idea of building professional learning communities within our departments. So allowing data to be the driving force, to analyze it, to be intent, to drive with an intent to internalize our curriculum and our activities and our lessons and what students are doing and what are the levels of performance that students need to get to. All of those things coupled with our focus on the data, of course, that our MCAS results from the state of Massachusetts guide us through. And we have only had retest, as you know, this year, but just a little bit of semester one data. I'm really excited about this data. It really does show that our work is headed in the right direction. And students sat for English and math so far this year. They sat in November before Thanksgiving break. We had students sit for English Language Arts retest and math retest. Those would be students who are in the tenth, oh, excuse me, repeating the tenth grade in eleventh or in twelfth. MCAS basically historically just targets ninth grade in biology and then, of course, tenth grade in reading and in math. So students who are repeating tenth grade, current eleven, current twelve, students who are still not meeting competency and/or passing that MCAS, which is, as you know, a graduation requirement. We had students sit for gen ed, special ed, and of course, our MLL population. We had students retest, gen ed students, three students retested in ELA, and then four students retested in math. And then in special ed, we had seven students retesting and eight students retesting in math from special ed. And then our MLAs were slightly higher. We had nine students retesting in ELA and ten students retesting in math. I am very excited again about these results because we saw that we had a hundred percent of students complete competency, having passed or met competency in English Language Arts. So now we only have the students currently enrolled to take that test this coming spring. For our sped students, we are at eighty-six percent. Only one student will have to retest in early spring, in March, next month, coming so quickly. And also in ELA, our work around MLAs, we had forty-four percent of our students that did pass on that retest opportunity. We do have a retest two again, like I said, next month, and we will have five students that will still have to attempt that again. And then in math, our scores are, excuse me, our percentages, our data led us to seventy-five percent of students who sat who were gen ed did pass that retest, and only one student will have to retest on retest two. And then in special ed, again, seventy-five percent of our students did pass with only two students from that subgroup needing to retest next month. And lastly, our MLL population, fifty percent of those students did pass, and five of them will sit for retest two next month. So that's just a little bit of data that we've gathered from our state measurement this first semester. So we're really, really excited because that is helping us trend in the right direction. And I made some notes in the handout that I provided to you. We are, we are doing this work, we are in this work. And I know that together, you know, a community at Bartlett, we are working hard and we will reach those goals. We will be able to get students, you know, performing at grade level. We do have seventy students who just sat for the retest in biology last week. That is a very high number of seventy students, but we definitely were very intent-driven around our work with those students, whether they entered a remedial course this year for retest if they were repeaters or students who had an opportunity to sit for bootcamp and a bootcamp for MCAS review. We had multiple opportunities for students to engage with us. We are really, really, really hoping that they did as well as our other numbers, and we know that they will. And then this spring, we will focus on driving home the work in our classrooms to provide research-based strategies that help students grow. And of course, using, as you heard Superintendent Prangeli say earlier, our HQI- And of course, using um, as you heard um Superintendent Prangely say earlier, our H Q I M around our curriculums that we have adopted and that we have worked with our teachers on. We have eighty two students who will sit for English and math M C A S um in this later spring, and a hundred and four ninth graders who will sit in early June, the first week of June for the biology exam. Um, before I go on, are there any questions about that? Because that was a lot of information. Sorry.
Mr. Collins, can you just explain when you say um that students are are uh retesting? What does that mean? Is that because they didn't pass or?
Yep, so students, so students who students who have, very untimely, someone is literally uh ringing my doorbell, sorry. Um, I don't know if you could hear it or not. Um, but we um students who retest are students who did not pass the M C A S the first time that they may have sat for it. In this school year, in semester one, we retest in November for the reading and the math exam. And then there is a retest second option, which uh, or excuse me, second opportunity, and that comes in March, which is next month for us. And then, of course, the regular spring administration comes um in May, and then again in June for our ninth graders taking biology. So if they had to retest, those are students who had not yet met that competency level, and that is a requirement, of course, to graduate um from the state um in Massachusetts. And we are going to continue to work, continue to work um on that and 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 meet the needs of our students. So that is hopefully uh our goal, that the seventy students that sat for the biology retest last week will not have to retest again in June, that will just have our ninth graders that are taking it for the first time in June.
Okay, so those those students that are retaste, retesting with biology didn't pass the first time around?
They did not pass as ninth graders last June.
I see. Okay.
So those are part of our numbers in terms of um, you know, our data that we are uh working through every day uh with the state. And so those are the things that we're really focused on in um allowing students to get the platform so that they can pass or meet competency on these exams.
Thank you for explaining that. And it's clear, you know, the a hundred percent of our gen ed students passed the E L A and the vast majority passed the math. So certainly work to be done, but but also some some successes that we've seen also.
Great successes, both um also, you know, in the two big areas that we're focused as a district initiative around our um students with I E Ps, our sped population and our M L Ls. We did make gains there as well. So uh, you know, it's super exciting there as well, and I know that it's only up from here.
Thank you for adding that. Yes, I agree with you. Thank you for those updates. I know you have more, but thanks for answering that. Dr. Mackay, did you have something you wanted to add?
I just wanted, I just wanted the committee to understand. I know some of you might understand this already, but like for for newcomer students, um we've, we've had a a large number of students come this year, um and older newcomers. And so the state requires that newcomers who are, so students who are in the country less than one year uh take the math and science. Um, and they don't necessarily, they can take the the E L A portion for practice, but they're not required to take the E L A portion if they're in their first year. But I think, you know, I think some of the results are indicative of the fact that some of our students are taking the exams in their first year, or even in their second year, to like really have enough language to um to meet all of the requirements of testing in another language. It's, it's really, really high level. And so it's important, and it's it's work that we must continue to analyze about not just getting them ready for M C A S, but in the work that we do day to day in our classrooms and meeting the needs of all students and exposing students to the high-quality education that they need um to be successful. But I just wanted the committee to understand that piece as far as the L data as well.
Thank you. That's important to be aware of as well. Any other questions or comments about M C A S before we move on? No? Okay, Mr. Collins, all you.
Yeah. So just to highlight a few things from our semester one. We had quite a few students who moved into semester two um in a continuation of courses that um, you know, went throughout the year. Some of their electives um continued throughout the entire year, whether that's an A P course or our arts courses. We did have um wonderful uh holiday concerts as well as the preparation, of course, as I mentioned tonight, for empty bowls. We had wonderful uh efforts and amazing turnouts for uh our fall sports and our uh cheerleading team, uh great, and it's grown. We've saw more students coming out for football this year. We have a lot of wonderful semester one highlights. I think important to both mention the social ones as well as the academic ones. We had our DECA program, which has competed all year in multiple facets, and um tonight will be uh um asking for approval for an overnight um on the agenda tonight, which is the culmination of their work for the year, because they keep um moving on in all of those areas. We have our P L T W programs, our pathways that extend for students from the middle school into the high school. And those pathways have led into our internships, which is what I'm going to close out with tonight. I just want to say that the change to a comprehensive master schedule that is block style was definitely difficult to do in the beginning, and it allowed students opportunities to um extend into different areas in semester one, and some of them, you know, changed in quarter or, excuse me, in um quarter three, as we began semester two um last month, and made some changes, but we had kids that were able to step out of their comfort zone, take different electives and opportunities to uh be in class every day uh for multiple minutes versus what they were used to. And I just want to say uh what great work the teachers at Bartlett have done to embrace the training around um that schedule, but also the shift to a student-centered schedule that meets the needs of our students, as you saw, the need for remediation and the need for students who are still experiencing some gaps. It's a lot of work, and I think Dr. Mackay said it perfectly. It's every day in our work. And um I just want to lift up the teachers at Bartlett for being able to be in that work every day. As I close out tonight, I want to talk to you just a little bit about our internships. It's super exciting to be able to connect with our community and have the partnerships. You see them at events, of course, sporting events or things like empty bowls or concerts. But it's so important to be able to connect students individually, um on a smaller scale, of course, because we don't have a large amount of students out right now, but we do have eight students um who are out, and one happens to be our student rep who is here tonight, and um it's really exciting that students are connecting um in the internships through the chapter seventy four marketing pathway, and then also the advanced manufacturing pathway. We have students who are working with Choice One Graphics, students who are working with Choice One Temps, and then the uh Chamber of Commerce, as well as Gen Tex and the Webster I T Department right at uh Webster Public Schools, which is really a great opportunity as well to not only uh grow in our own professional growth, but to grow our young people in our business as well. So it's nice that the community is also at home as well as out in the um community of Webster. So I just want to lift up and tell you that the kids that have went have been amazing. We get amazing reports on their professionalism, their soft skills, their abilities to connect and to uh talk about their experience at Bartlett, but also to also report back to Mrs. Bigelow and the uh P L T W C T E department about their experiences there. So the communication is two-way, and it's really, really great. And they just wanted me to say to you tonight, they would love to come back with me as one of my reports out, my, one of my reports out in the months to come. So I would assume closer to the end of the school year, maybe um if I'm on uh one of the weeks towards the end of the May um or around before graduation, they would love to come, and Ms. Bigelow would love to come just to let you personally hear some testimonies as part of my report about the greatness that exists in us connecting to the community with these pathways and the internships.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. It would be an honor to have them join us. Uh, anytime we have an opportunity for any of our staff or any of our students to uh come out and talk with us about the good work that's going on, they're, they're always welcome. So um, we'd be glad to have them.
Thank you all so much.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee for Mr. Collins?
I just wanted to give um Mr. Collins and Michelle Bigelow a huge shout out. I know she has been um working tirelessly to get these internships up and going, working hard, connecting with businesses and making um, you know, building that relationship. Um, and I know there's a couple other that she has in the works already um that she's building up that um, I won't mention them yet, but I think they're pretty close to finalized, if not finalized. Um, yep. So um, thank you for all your efforts in that. Um, there, it, it's amazing work. They're doing a great job. And um anything we can do to build that community, school, relationship, partnership is is fantastic and much appreciated.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Well, thank you for your updates, Mr. Collins, and and for the data that you shared with us with regard to M C A S as well.
Thank you.
Nice to see you. You can answer your door now.
I sent them away. I don't know if you saw me. I went like this. Was like, I don't know. I don't know if they wanted to shovel or what. I'm not really sure. It was a bunch of kids, so.
Oh, really? Funny. Um, well, moving right along, uh, the next item on the agenda is an update from our student representative. Good evening, Mohammed.
Good evening. How are you guys?
Good, thank you. How are you?
Good. Okay, so at Bartlett, there was M C A S makeup on the week of the five to the ninth of February. But on a more funner note, we had the Empty Bowls event, which Mr. Collins talked about, but I'm gonna try, try to dive in more a little bit on that. And then there was a winter carnival that happened at Park Ave, which most Bartlett students and Webster Middle students helped out on that. So let's start with M C A S. So for M C A S, um there was bio makeups, I think. Um, and it looked to have gone really well. The students that hopefully took them, um, hopefully you guys did really well and good job on them. Um, and for the winter carnival, it happened on February third at Park Ave. Most Bartlett students and Webster Middle students were there to help out. It was just a great event. There was a lot of games there. They had set up um like tic-tac-toe. There was like a spin the wheel. I was, I was helping out with like the bowling. That was pretty fun. Um, there was prizes as well, which if you got the tickets, you can win prizes. There was like a whole table full of pros prizes. Um, and there was also pizza. Who doesn't love pizza? Um, and uh I loved it there. It was really fun. It was just an amazing experience. Um, so empty bowls. Um, it was just an amazing event that ha, it's held every year in Bartlett, which all the money that is gotten from the event goes to the Webster Deadly Food Drive. A lot of restaurants and stores um give their donations with food. The students went to go pick up the food. It was really fun. I was one of the students. Um, they, um, so yeah, the, the stores can grow, um, restaurants give food. And then people that come to the event, they can donate with cherishable items, non-cherishable items, and then um the money with the bowls that they buy. Um, yeah, um, it was just an amazing event. I keep saying it, but it was honestly. It was an amazing event. Um, a lot of people came. I love to see the students that were helping out there, and the guests that came, I just want to say thank you, because it just made the night really amazing. And yeah, that's all my updates. If you have any questions, please ask.
Thanks for your updates. I, Empty Bowls is my, probably one of my favorite events as well. So um, it was great to see you there and lots of students there either showcasing their artwork or um their musical talents, their voices. Um, so, so always a great time to be had there, for sure. Uh, any questions or comments from Mohammed from the committee?
I would just like to give a shout out to Mohammed and all the students at the high school. Um, just stopping at the winter carnival, that place was full of Webster Middle School kids and Bartlett High School students, supporting the younger students, supporting the staff there, um welcoming families in. It, it's a wonderful to see how well they represent us out in the community. And um even at Empty Bowls, there were so many of them, uh so many students there supporting. Um, I talked to Ms. Gillenhammer and Mr. Harrington, and they just said the kids were running the show. They were doing everything that was needed. Uh, they were overwhelmed with the amount of support they had. And I would just also like to thank the community for coming out and supporting such a wonderful event. Um, it truly is an amazing night, Mohammed. I, I couldn't agree more. It's one of my favorite events. Um, they're all wonderful to go to, but it's great to see the collaboration between the districts, uh schools within the districts and supporting one another. And I just wanted to say thank you to the students. Thank you to the administration. Um, and and it just shows what a wonderful school community we are and um how wonderful our kids are. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Prangely and Mohammed as well for your updates. Uh, any other questions or comments about any of the happenings at Bartlett High School? No? Okay. Well, hearing none, the next item on the agenda under old business is a monthly report on fundraising applications. And just as a friendly reminder, it's the role of the school committee to review fundraising activities, but we don't approve that. Um, the approvals are done at the building level. Mrs. Prangely, do you have any uh fundraising activities you want to tell us about? You are muted. If you're talking, it looks like you're talking. We had to do it at least once for the meeting.
And you know, you missed what I said, because it was really wonderful. That was like the best speech of the night. Um.
Thank you, meaning a turn. I'm kidding.
I was talking about popcorn. How can that not be exciting?
Oh, wow. Give it to us.
Yeah. So Project Lead the Way is on selling popcorn for their program. Uh, we also have Decca, who is gonna be selling some snacks and drinks. Um, the class of twenty twenty five is selling Valentines. Um, the class of twenty twenty four is is selling um some rubber cupid uh cupid ducks. Um, the Bartlett High School Student Council had Krispy Kreme um donuts, which, thank you very much. My waistline is not appreciating it, but I love the Krispy Kreme donuts. Um, and then also the Bartlett Art Department is um doing a fundraiser with Papaginos. I believe it is on the fourteenth. Um, I think, uh, so if you go out and get um some pizza, part of those sales, go to um, they're gonna be donating the profits to the um Webster Deadly Food Chair. And um that concludes all the monthly fundraising activities going on that I have.
All right, great. Thank you for that. I'm still getting used to toggling between um between items here. So I'm looking at my other monitor, and I'm still trying to keep up with all the things we need to be looking at. The next item on the agenda, also under old business, is the F Y twenty five budget. This will be our third review of the budget.
Great, thank you. So I am gonna practice sharing my screen here in a moment.
Thank you.
Um, and then Lisa's gonna take over the budget presentation. Um, but as you know, we've been working through um our budget process. We brought back to you in January a seven percent budget um that we looked at um that we recommended putting forward. Um, we have since received state numbers, um which uh Ms. Kontos will be reviewing in a few minutes. Um, and then we have another budget for you to look at with a recommendation. So in your packet, you should have a copy of the budget presentation, and then you should have a copy of a budget which um compares two columns. Um, we have gone back, like we said, we would as a team, as a district leadership team, reviewed the budget, and we reduced the budget down to approximately five percent, and that you will see tonight. Um, and we will dig into why it's at five percent and what our chapter seventy numbers look at. So let me see if I can share this for Lisa. And then I will let her take it away. All right, how we doing?
All right, you can go to the next slide. Let me just set the stage for what we're gonna cover in this segment. So on the agenda, we have four key areas that we'll focus in on. Um, one is just a high-level overview of the Healy Dist- Dist- Driscoll budget. We'll cover the preliminary numbers for chapter seventy eight. Then we'll walk a little bit through the calculation of chapter seventy and the local contribution requirements. And then we'll um end with talking through the two different budget options that the superintendent just mentioned. So before we jump in, just a couple of key things is a lot of the content and information that you'll see in this deck um does come from three key sources, I'd say. One is the Mass Tax Payers Foundation. The other is the D E S I website. The other is the DESI website. And then some additional information from the Town of Webster website as well. There are some slides that I included in here for informational purposes only. So there's gonna be a few that you're gonna see me go through really quickly. I provided them. Just to give you a broader perspective of the fiscal situation in the state. So. With that said, let's move into the Healy Driscoll Budget. Not gonna spend much time on the first two slides. These are just two key slides that I obtained from a webinar that the Mass Taxation Taxpayers Foundation put out. Just after the chapter seventy preliminary numbers came out. You remember, I think at our last school committee meeting, the numbers were coming out the following day. And that Friday, there was a webinar. So these first two. Give you an overview of what's the fiscal situation and what were the five key things that they thought you should know about this budget? You can move to the next slide. And then then went into five key things that you need to know about it. Now. We're gonna move into the next two slides because I think that's more pertinent to what we want to discuss. So on the the third slide in here. We're looking at overall a one point six million dollar, I'm sorry, billion-dollar increase. Of which the majority of that sixty percent is going to healthcare and support services. From an education standpoint and local aid, those two numbers are really, you know, just below five percent each and less than that. So out of that, education is seeing a portion of that. Onto the next slide. Key thing, and this is gonna be covered as we move into the next segment, but we're seeing in total state aid, we're seeing an increase of four percent. Which is, you know, two hundred and sixty-three. There, I think a couple of key things to to mention that depressed the year-over-year chapter seventy and the growth. One is that foundation inflation index rate, right, which is at one point four percent. And really was capped in fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four. And the fact that the student enrollment across the state only increased by two hundred and twenty-five students overall. So essentially, it's a flat student enrollment rate across the state. So those are some of the key factors. The I think an important thing is that the governor is fully funding this act. I think that's important to note. So. Let's jump into some of the numbers and what that looks like. So we're gonna go over the preliminary numbers for chapter seventy-eight. You can see that we have the two hundred and sixty-three million dollar increase or four percent. Like what was covered in the Mass Taxpayers Foundation slides. Now, this act, this is not new, but I'm just gonna highlight it. There is five key areas from a budget standpoint that's focused in on. Benefits and fixed charges, guidance and psychological services, special ed out-of-district tuition, English learners, and low-income students. Sorry for that. So where we are in terms of this act is we are in the fourth year of the implementation. And these inflation rates are, for the five areas, are closing another gap by one sixth. Go on to the next one. So this act, looking at the low-income factor here. You will see statewide that the low-income enrollment is just over four hundred thousand there. Compared to four twenty-one. So it it actually decreased a bit in the projections. For Webster, you can see that sixty-eight percent of our total enrollment, and those are enrollment counts. Fall within this low-income category as it relates to the formula and how it's calculated. The bottom section here actually gives you an explanation. I'm not gonna go through it in detail, but what qualifies a student to be designated? In this low-income category. So it's. Targeting any one of these three that may be hit as a result of that. Yep, we can move on. Okay, so in terms of the additional rates, so if we look at employee benefits. For fiscal year twenty-five, we have an increase of just a little over five percent. And then across all the other factors that are used in calculating this. A rate of one point three five has been applied to all of those other foundation budget rates. We can move on to the next one. So this is really just, this really is not gonna apply to us this year, but if in fact. We were not receiving an increase at all, there would be this minimum aid adjustment, which means it holds us harmless. If we weren't getting an increase. So this really doesn't apply to Webster at this time. We can go on to the next one. Okay, so in terms of some key points, again, relative to where we are, from a statewide foundation, we talked about. The overall enrollment just barely increasing by the two hundred and twenty-five students. So essentially, flat in Webster. We're seeing under a one percent increase in our enrollment from the prior year. But overall, across the state, a hundred and sixty-five districts are seeing a decrease. While a hundred and forty-eight are experiencing increases in their enrollment. So that gives you a breakdown statewide. We can move to the next slide. I'm gonna just.
Yeah, and I just think I want to throw in a point there. So those students, those districts that show a decreased enrollment. Those are districts that are probably gonna receive that minimum aid. That doesn't apply to Webster. So basically, the law states that you can never lose money. So you're gonna stay at your prior year's aid, but you'll get the thirty dollars per student. That you have in your district. So you, so it's not like you don't get anything, but it's minimal. It it. It's a minimal amount. So I'm sorry, Lisa, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I think that's a, that's a good point. It's the thirty dollars. And actually, I think that's gonna come up in a slide that will hit shortly. And then the next one relative to. Aid is the increase for in-district special ed for vocational and non-vocational students. So we saw them close the gap a bit in these two categories. By having an inflation increase here, moving that up to four point nine three and three point nine three. This is just a snippet of where we are in terms of our in-district and tuitioned out from a special ed standpoint. So for Webster, we are seeing an increase by one point eight three percent for in-district. And then our tuitioned out, we're seeing an increase of four point eight five percent. Then we can move into the actual calculation now that we kind of established what the House has established for these various rates. In the calculation that are critical for doing the actual calculation itself. So I think it's good to just step back. And focus in on what is the goal of this formula for chapter seventy? And it really is intended to ensure that every district has sufficient resources. So that it can meet its foundation budget. And they really look at an equitable combination through property taxes and state aid to accomplish that. So when we move on to the next one, the superintendent mentioned this, but these are some of the parameters that they set as they move forward. The bottom one is the one that she was just referring to, though, in the case where your enrollment decreases. The minimum aid that those districts will get is thirty dollars per student. And then they set a rough target here for what they believe the local contribution should be. So let's jump into the steps that are taken to take all of these, all these data points and pull this together. So the first step really is defining that foundation budget for every district. So this is looking at key statistics and demographics and programs. That's one of the reasons why when we presented the budget on January ninth, we presented a lot of key data points, right? Because that's a key element in how you establish what are the needs of the district from a foundation budget standpoint. The next step is moving into how do you establish what's an equitable local contribution requirement? So it's really looking at the overall district's property tax. And based on the relative wealth of the municipality. And then in the end, when they calculate all those things together, then we come up with what is the state aid that will be providing? So your required local contribution plus the state aid establishes the net school spending requirement. And that's the minimum amount that a district needs to spend to comply with the state law. On the next slide, this actually takes some of those numbers that we talked about a little bit earlier and then. Really started looking at the state budget and how they start appropriating and looking at that. And so there's a few steps in there and they calculate first overall across all the districts, what's the overall statewide foundation budget that's needed? This will make a little bit more sense when I jump into a slide that we advanced to soon. And then based on looking at those factors within every municipality relative to its property taxes as well as income. It also will factor what amount should be the local contribution, and you can see that fifty-nine percent there. And then they they divide that up into their income effort versus the property effort. We can advance to the next one. So when we think about the key factors, I talked about some of them as we moved through it. What I did hear was in looking at these six key factors, three that impact your foundation budget, which is enrollment. The wage adjustment factor that's included in the proposed budget, as well as the inflation rate. That combined with what we can expect to receive from a local contribution. Looks at three factors here, I'm sorry, property value, income, and municipal growth. So in parentheses, you are seeing actual numbers. Our actual enrollment projection as of October first, twenty twenty-three, and then the numbers that were included in this proposed budget. The items with an asterisk are those things that will vary based upon the municipality and the district. So that gives you some of the key numbers, and then that sets the stage for us to advance to the next slide. Because what this next slide shows you is it's essentially the grid that is used. You look across the top and you can see. The base foundation components, which consists of seven areas. And then you have the incremental cost above that base. Which includes those additional focus areas. And then you see the counts, the enrollment enrollment counts, which is why that is circled. Because that's a key factor there. And so all of those things and all of those rates that we took, one thing you don't see here, didn't want to bombard you, but it is in the appendix. The actual rates for every one of these sections are in the appendix, if you were interested in calculating it yourself, which I'm sure you're not. And then we establish in the bottom left-hand corner what low-income bracket that our district falls into. And as you heard earlier. Little different when I took the numbers versus when we take it from a financial standpoint, our low-income percentage is seventy-seven point three percent. Which puts us in the low-income group of eleven. So let's move to the next slide. Want to just go into, I just mentioned that we are in group eleven. That is the one that has the arrow showing on the screen. And what you can see here is the breakdown across the state in terms of where. Districts are falling. We are. I think our, when I, when I was looking at this in terms of the state average. We are about thirty-nine hundred per student above the state average. Or twenty-eight point thirty-seven percent higher than the state average. Just to give you a sense of where our population is relative to our enrollment. Then we can move on to the next one. This one's a little bit busy. What you're seeing here is at the top, left-hand segment is really a comparison to fiscal year twenty-four. On the right is the calculation for our chapter seventy funding. And then you have some five-year trends here. So what we are seeing in chapter seventy-eight is an increase of just slightly below five percent. From fiscal year twenty-four to fiscal year twenty-five. Or in dollars, nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars. The bottom is again the districts that are receiving just the thirty dollars per pupil because their enrollments actually dropped. So we are at this twenty-million-dollar number and we can advance to the next slide. What does that really mean to us? So I highlighted some of the key points in terms of what we're seeing for an increase in chapter seventy-eight of four point eight five percent. And then our increase expected in our local contribution of five point six four percent. On the bottom to the left and the right is just some historical information about our chapter seventy funding throughout the years. You can see. We did have one year in which we did get minimum aid. That was back in fiscal year twenty twenty-two. So this gives you an overall view of where we are as it stands with the preliminary budget. As well as a retrospective view of where we've been with our budgets since fiscal year two thousand and sixteen. Not gonna spend a lot of time on the next three slides. These are slides. Or information that came from both DESI and the town's website. But I thought the school committee would be interested in having this historical data, should you need to reference it. So with that said. Ms. Prangely, we can move on to the fiscal year twenty-five budget options. And I will mention before I go in, there's some other additional information in the appendix if you're interested in looking at it. Some includes, I mentioned the rates in there, but additionally in there is some of the, how the local contribution is calculated. As well as some comparisons to some surrounding communities. So you can see. What other communities are receiving in the area and then what are some of those key factors that contribute to both their chapter seventy-eight and their required local contribution? And so what we have here, the superintendent kicked this off at the beginning. We have two budgets that we are presenting at this time, really just highlighting again what we presented on January ninth. And what though that budget was at twenty-seven seven, that was a little over a seven percent increase. The district leadership team went back to the table and looked at the budget again and put. Really refined what we looked at and made some very difficult decisions to reduce that budget. To what was a five percent budget when we were working on it, but you know, things change. Things are dynamic, especially in the special ed realm. And we do have some, some changes coming forward with some new positions that we had to build back into the budget. I think there's a decision for later in the meeting on that. So what did we do to reduce the budget? And so it was a reduction of one point six five percent. Or four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. What we did in the technology space was we made some adjustments for enrollments. We did a refinement on what those original estimates were. And we. Looked to take a portion of that spend to see if we can advance that through the ESSA grant. We eliminated a few positions here. You can say that, you can see there's three at Park Ave. One sped teacher and two Paris. At Webster Middle School, there's an academic interventionalist, as well as a nurse assistant, and then the art teacher at Bartlett High School. We made, we again, special education is very fluid and we did make a tuition adjustment based on change. We also did a reallocation in this budget of substitute funding. However, we did keep it level funded, but we did reallocate that across the budget. And then one thing that we caught as we were going through this exercise is we realized that we had a assistant principal position that was not in draft one. We did add that back in. So that was, the last two really were not reductions. The bottom one was an increase. The other one was a level funding. I'm gonna pause there and turn it back over to the superintendent to see if there's anything else she wanted to add at this time.
Yeah, thank you, Lisa. Great job. So when we sat down to look at this budget, we had taken your feedback from the committee at tasking us. With trying to include those long-term subs and back into our budget, which we initially worked on. And had them in. And then once our numbers came out, it was clear. That we were not gonna see the level of chapter seventy funding that we had hoped that we saw in prior years. We, you know, they are holding true to this formula that they said they were gonna hold true. The major impact comes from the inflation rate. It was capped at four point five and that was across the board for the last two years. And I don't think anybody was expecting the decrease that we had in that inflation rate, which really impacted the financials across. the financials across the state for all school districts. Um, that with the lack of increased enrollment, we were fortunate that we haven't lost any enrollment. We did see a slight decrease, which is a good thing for us. So um, when we looked at the budget, we thought we regroup, we had been working. Um, I don't believe a seven percent is a realistic budget to put forward. Um, so in conversations, we did get it down to a five percent. Um, we looked at positions, we looked at positions that we've had a difficult time filling. Um, we looked at enrollment numbers um at Park Ave, at middle school and at high school. Um, so we approached it in the sense that what can we fix immediately? How can we reduce without touching any positions? We looked at technology and we looked at special ed. We did have a move out in special ed, so we adjusted that tuition accordingly. Um, we also looked at our ESR funding and said, how can you, as you know, our ESR funding um, is going away. Um, that's going to be gone as of September. So we looked at what can we apply to that budget now that'll help our budget for next year? Um, so we took a lot of those technology purchases and we're going to put that into um, uh, ESR funding for this year and reallocate some of that money in ESR um, that we were going to use to maybe help the building project a little bit. Um, so we looked at that. So that was immediate off the top. Um, unfortunately, there's not a lot of fat in our budget. It's thin already. Um, so then we delved into positions. Um, at Park Ave, we looked at a specialized teacher. Uh, there was two specialized teachers at one grade level. Um, we still had a vacant position over there, so I believe that is one position that we can eliminate without having to um, have a reduction in a pos- in a, in a actual person over there, I believe. Um, we looked at two powers at Park Ave. There were powers that were paid out of ESR for kindergarten classrooms. Um, so we reduced those two powers in the K classrooms. Um, there is an academic interventionist position at the middle school that is currently vacant because the person we had in that position is actually filling in a special education position at the middle school there. Duly certified and the need was in special ed, so we moved that person over to special ed so that academic interventionist position is now vacant. So we are removing that. Uh, we do have, over COVID, we increased our nursing staff. Um, so currently we have two nurses at every building. We're going back to our previous model where we had a floater nurse who went between the middle and high school. Um, so she was point five at middle, point five at the high school, so that will be a reduction of one position. Um, and then again, we unfortunately um looked at our substitute positions and um, it is not in the best interest to keep a long-term sub in there along with some of the others. Um, you know, one long-term sub is too paraprofessional, so it didn't seem um, like a good option to keep those, as beneficial as they can be at times to have those long-term subs in there. Overall, it didn't seem uh like it was in the best interest of our students. Um, I don't know if the principals, I want to give you an opportunity if there's anything you would like to share um, about what's going on in the building and your budget, any concerns or thoughts that you'd like to point out?
Um, I think that maybe we'll just first look at questions because, um, you know, as you said, in talking with, between buildings, like we looked at what needs to, what positions would maybe need to move over and when there wasn't the need at, for example, the middle school. So we have two special ed teachers in fourth grade. Um, there isn't the need at the middle school for two due to differences in scheduling and being able to support the students um, the same way. So that allotted for that change in staffing. Um, two powers at, at Park Ave. We have several positions that we have been unable to fill um that have been added over the years. So I think we've seen ourselves um, working effectively without those two, so we can move some positions around, ensure we're still supporting our kindergarteners. Um, but just those are positions that we have been unable to fill throughout the year or filled for a week here or there before um having them move to somewhere else. So um, that's, that's just for Park Ave. I think that when we're looking at ten positions that were funded through ESR um, to absorb those into the budget is a, a, a lot to ask. So um, out of ten positions that were funded by ESR, I feel like um this is, this is pretty reasonable.
Are there any questions? From the school committee?
To the chair.
Mr. Adamopoulos.
Has the town given us any indication of where they're at budget-wise at this point or what their proposed allocation to the school is?
No, not yet. So typically the process has been is which is a lot of times why we stick with the budget and we go down and then we have future discussions. They are working on their budget now um and putting it together. Uh, we have not been given out a number. As you know, they take our chapter seventy, just because it says there's nine hundred thousand dollars in chapter seventy doesn't mean that the school department's going to get it. Because what they do is they take all the revenue coming into the community. They look at any tax base that they have coming in, what they have for new growth. Um, they estimate their receipts. And then they take that number at a whole, as a whole, and over the past, they've been splitting that seventy to thirty. Um, seventy school department, thirty percent town. Um, so um, just because chapter seventy came in at nine hundred and forty thousand doesn't mean that um, that's automatically school funds that we get to use. Um, so we will after, you know, we're required by charter to send down a budget um, February twenty-eighth. Um, I don't think that um we are in the position at this point um to reduce any more than we have. Um, my recommendation at this point would be to stick with the five point three five percent budget. Um, and I think, you know, we need to schedule a budget workshop because I do think as we go through March and April, um, there's going to be many more budget discussions as we get um finer details of where we are with um, our revenue as a community as a whole. Um, and then we can get into those more difficult discussions as to what our budget is going to look like. Um, you know, I'd like to say that I think we're going to stay at a five percent budget, but I think that's highly unlikely.
I mean, certainly, when uh the ESR funds began coming in, we, I think, use those funds as judiciously as we possibly could and, and really built in some truly needed positions, some of which I think were necessitated by, by COVID and others that had sort of been on our wish list for quite a long time and we were finally able to make them happen. And unfortunately, with ESR funds uh drying up essentially, um, we're, we're having a reckoning here when it comes to um, you know, how we're able to sort of move forward. So certainly we never want to see the, any positions be eliminated. Um, but I do certainly understand that w- we need to really keep a laser focus on, on what our students really need and, and how we can laser in on that and, and try to get needs met. I have heard a lot about um, substitute teachers and, and building subs, uh, the long-term subs as you referenced them. And um, it, it sounds like, you know, that's just not something that's in the cards right now. In addition to maybe even perhaps some other things as well.
Yeah, I think in a perfect world, they're great, you know, it's consistency, but that one position, when you're looking, you know, you're looking at a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, if not more, for three long-term subs. I mean, that's two teachers, that's, you know, six powers, that's six or seven powers. Um, and that one position is not enough to cover the needs that we have in the building on a day-to-day basis. You know, our needs are greater than that. So um, you know, I, you know, we've seen a lot through COVID, that ESR money has been great and it would be um, I wish I could sit here and say, you know, the needs have changed, um, but our needs are just as just as great as they were last year and the year before. Um, we're still recovering, we're still working through it and we have a lot of work to do. So um, I don't think that we have put in anything that we said, boy, we really don't need that. Um, you know, everything that we have added, we have needed and it has always been in the best interest of our students. Um, so, you know, unfortunately, those days are over. Um, you know, that comfort level that we, that ESR brought us, uh, which we knew was coming, we knew this was coming, this isn't a surprise to us, we've talked about it for some time. Um, but it's real now, it's here, it's happening and we've got some, you know, it was hard getting to this because when we start looking at the work that we're trying to do and I feel like that work um, it's really been great this year and it's um, we're really I think seeing a difference and, and I'm hoping that we're going to see some gains and um you know, you don't want to lose that momentum.
Right. I agree. Any other questions or comments from the committee? No. I guess my, my question, my um thought that I would, this isn't exactly budget related, but it, it impacts the budget would be, you know, Mrs. Prangeli, you just indicated that even the one long-term sub per building doesn't, doesn't meet the needs that we have. Obviously, we expect that we're going to have more than one person out per day, but maybe we could look in the future at what that looks like, what, what our real needs are with regard to um, covering for when people are out and that kind of thing and what that looks like on a day-to-day basis and then you know, ensuring that maybe we have a sufficient substitute pool that we can pull in on more of a per day basis that would be less costly. Although also much less consistent for students, I think.
I am open to any ideas as to building our pool. Um, you know, unfortunately, it's, it's, it's tough. You know, we don't have, we don't have a deep list, um, but it's something we can certainly work on.
Yeah. Sure. Okay. Any other questions or comments from the committee with regard to the budget?
Um, I, I would like to add though, if we are going to look at a budget workshop, I know that has been questioned. Um, I think should do it in um, March, early March. Um, the town has a budget schedule and they were potentially looking at a joint meeting um, to discuss um, budget across the town with finance. Um, school and town officials at the end of March, I think it was March twenty-fifth. Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, that's correct. And it's a potential second one, April eighth.
Mm-hmm. So I'm hoping within the next week or two, we have some more numbers from the town. We have um, a more solid idea of what our chapter seventy, I mean, what our overall revenue is going to look like um, in, in town. Um, because they are finishing up their budget stuff and putting their stuff together now. Uh, so if we meet in early March, um, and how the, how I see this working is that maybe we could use Park Ave Library um, break out in groups. Um, school committee can rotate through the groups to talk about um budgets with the schools um and their needs. And then we can take some feedback. Um, you know, we'll present our thoughts uh on the budget and, you know, any changes that we might have at that point. Um, take all that feedback and then have a more um solid budget that maybe we want to change or adjust once we find out more about our revenue numbers moving forward that we could vote on towards the end of March. Um, because we typically do our public hearing in April. First, first school committee in April, I believe.
Okay. Timing is a little bit challenging because we've been waiting on these numbers from the state. Now that we finally have them, it feels like a crunch, but you know, that's just sort of the way the budget process goes, goes each year without any, you know, we don't have any control over that. Um, so am I correct that we need to submit a draft budget to the town the end of this month, right?
Correct. We, we, we're required to submit a budget to the town hall by February twenty-eighth. My recommendation would be at this point is to keep the five point three five percent budget. That would be my recommendation to submit and downtown unless you feel um strongly otherwise or you have suggestions um, that you would like us to take back. We have one more meeting at the end of the month on February twenty-eighth. Um, I don't know that we're going to know a, a lot new between now and February twenty-eighth. Um, as far as what the town budget looks like. Um, but I strongly would, you know, we still have two months after that to make adjustments as needed and to come to a consensus about what it looks like and what chap, what um revenue sources look like and what does it mean as a community of the whole.
Okay. So it sounds like the recommendation would be to submit the five point three five percent increase budget now with the knowledge that we'll get together for a budget workshop. We're not married to this budget. In fact, you know, we're, you know, we're pretty sure we're going to need to revisit it and make some revisions, but at least we'll have something to give the town as a starting point. And then when we come together, we can gather any feedback and, and make any adjustments that are needed.
Yes. Yep.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the committee about this? No? Okay. It's just a review, there's no motion to be had here, correct?
No, unless you want to make a motion to submit this to the town, we'll do it early. It's up to you. We can always wait till the twenty, we can wait till the twenty-eighth and just bring it back on the twenty-eighth. And if something comes up that needs to change on our end, if, you know, we take in another big tuition or something should happen, um, we can do that or we just say status call and then vote it in on the twenty-eighth if you'd like, or the twenty-seventh, I think.
Right, just, right, we'll meet on the twenty-seventh. What's the desire of the committee? Any, any thoughts from the rest of the committee members here? Should we um, submit this budget early so the town has a little bit more time to to take a look at things or do we want to wait and see, uh, you know, that's a good point about a big move in or something like that. There could be something that really impacts things, but you know, the same is true after February twenty-eighth when we submit it, so.
Through the chair, my recommendation would be to wait until our next meeting, just in case we want to ponder some things um over both us or the district and to see if any revisions might be made.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Naparata. Any other comments from the rest of the committee about this? No? Okay. I think that's a good recommendation, you know, it gives us a little bit of time to uh reflect on things and um, make any necessary adjustments that we identified between now and it's about a little, about two weeks from now. Would that be okay with you, Mrs. Perangeli?
That is fine and we welcome any questions if there's things that you think about or things you want to know more. Um, please call Lisa or myself. Uh, we are happy to speak with you and answer any questions. Um, we'd rather you know and not sit there and wonder about things. So please reach out.
Thank you. Shall we, uh, when will we be scheduling the budget workshop? Is that something that we'll do outside of this meeting or what's, what's the thought there?
Um, we can, we can send out a couple of dates if you want. I can work with Lori tomorrow and we can send out a couple of dates and see what works for the committee. I mean, the suggestion that I would have is, I'm not, you know, we could do it the first week of March. I don't want to wait too late. Of course, we have school vacation next week and then the week after that, they're coming back and it's usually a pretty busy week. Um, so maybe the first week of March and then um, that gives us time. to do any revisions and come back for the first meeting in March, if we do it the first week, because I what's the date of our meeting in March? Is that March?
Is it the twelfth? I'm looking at calendars here, but I'm in. Yeah, the twelfth would be the the first school committee meeting.
Yep.
Yep, so maybe we could do something. I don't know how the committee feels about doing something the week of um the first week of March. Fifth or sixth or something like that, we could stick with the Tuesday or a Wednesday.
I I could do either of those days. Uh, I don't know about others on the committee here. Actually, the fifth would be much better for me. Everyone else available on the fifth?
Yeah, what time we talk, time we thinking?
Would would six be good or is earlier or later better for folks? I'm open. On on the fifth, I'm I'm available whenever.
I figure it probably should be like an hour and a half, maybe an hour, anywhere between an hour and a half and a two hour meeting. For give school committee enough time to loop through the schools. Uh, we'll do like a rotation, so you can each have an opportunity to speak with um each school. Uh, we do need to check, uh, thank you, Lori, for pointing that out, Amy, if the school is available and if there's any events going on on um that night on March fifth.
Uh, the only thing is PTO, but they can, they can meet in a classroom, they can that evening. Um, I assume we're talking evening.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so uh I have a faculty meeting that afternoon um until four forty-five, but then um PTO can, I'm sure, meet in a classroom.
Okay. So no earlier than five, obviously. Five might be cutting it a little bit close.
If if we had to move our faculty meeting, we certainly could. I mean, the budget is a is a time sensitive issue that we need to discuss, so if we have to change that, we can.
Oh, that's nice of you. Thank you. We don't want to disrupt your all's schedule either. Um.
But and five would be fine. It's not.
Yeah.
You know, it would be fine.
So I I mean, we we can schedule it now at five, five thirty, six, or we can table it and and come back together via email or something. Lori can float out some dates if that's preferable for folks.
Right?
Is it five o'clock we're all starting or five o'clock they're starting at the elementary?
No, it would be all of us in the library. So the way I envision it is to have all the principals at the library. Um, we would break out, so we could have, each school would have a group and then we could have special ed and L as a group. And then school committee members could like spend fifteen minutes in each group, so it'd be a rotation around, so it'd be a um, everybody would have an opportunity to speak to the the individual group.
Got it. I'm sorry, I just was clarifying.
Yep.
I'll block out that evening and maybe we can, we can handle the finer points via email.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anything else related to the budget before we move on to new business? No? Okay. The next item on the agenda under new business is the acceptance of a donation in the amount of approximately seven thousand dollars to purchase indoor track equipment from the Becker family and the Herman F. Becker family charity foundation.
Sorry, I'm getting back to my screens here.
That's okay, it's a lot of electronic juggling.
Mm-hmm. All right. So yes, so um I would like to thank the um Bells, the Becker family and the Herman F. Becker Charity Foundation for their donation. In the packet, you should have a list of items that were donated um for our track team totaling um six thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. So we'd just like to say thank you so much um for the community support. Very generous. So we'd like to accept that donation.
Hi. Are there any questions or comments from the committee about this donation? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the donation from the Becker family uh in the amount of six thousand eight hundred and ten dollars.
Oh, moved second.
There's a motion and a second. Uh, Lori, would you please poll the committee?
Member Naparata?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yeah.
Member Adamopolis?
Epstein.
Chair Siddiqui.
Yes. Motion passes. And and once again, on the behalf of the Webster School Committee, I'd like to thank the Becker family uh for their generous contribution to um to our town in general and more specifically uh for the track equipment. The next item on the agenda is the approval of an additional one point oh FTE paraprofessional at Bartlett High School.
Kathy, would you like to speak to this?
Hi, good evening. Thank you. Um, I'm happy to. Um, this is a position that we're requesting due to a move in um student um that we had this um well, recently, I should say, um who um comes to us with an IEP that requires him to have one-on-one support. Um, so therefore we are requesting that this um position be approved. I think um in your packet, I don't know if you have the memorandum which states that the um the funding for this position will come from um surplus in the salaries salary salary lines in the local budget.
Thank you. Yes, and that that is in the packet. Thank you, Ms. Barris. Are there any questions or comments from the committee about the addition of this position? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the additional one point oh FTE paraprofessional at Bartlett High School.
Oh, moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please poll the committee?
Member Naparata?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui.
Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the approval of an additional one point oh FTE ABA at Park Avenue Elementary School.
Okay, so um this position is being requested um due to a recommendation from a student's IEP team um showing that the student requires um more significant support during the school day and um therefore uh we're requesting this position be approved. Uh, again, it will come from um in terms of the funding source, it will come from salary surplus um in the local budget lines.
Thank you for the clarification there too, Ms. Barris. Any questions or comments from the committee about the addition of this role? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the additional one point oh FTE ABA at Park Avenue.
Oh, moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, Lori.
Member Naparata?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui.
Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the approval of an additional point four FTE ABA and a point five FTE paraprofessional in preschool at Park Avenue Elementary School.
Hey, so these are um, because both positions are in our uh integrated preschool program. And one of the students um does require um ABA support from an ABA therapist um one-to-one. And then the second position is for a student with multiple disabilities that requires IA paraprofessional support in the preschool. Um, they're both new students to our program. And um again, the in a discussion with the business office and Mrs. Kontois and um Ms. Prangeli, uh, we um determined that the positions would be funded through the salary uh surplus in the local budget lines.
And I just need to make a correction, um, Ms. Siddiqui, it's a uh point four FTE for an ABA and a point four um for an instructional assistant, not a point five.
Thank you, I noticed that as well, so uh both sixteen hours then. Okay, great. Thank you for that. So I will entertain, are there any questions or comments from the committee, first of all? Hearing none, I'll entertain, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just to clarify, the reason for the point four versus like a halftime position is that the preschool program only runs four days, so it's um four mornings or four afternoons, so.
I see. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay. So uh, hearing no further discussion about these roles, I'll entertain a motion to approve an additional point four FTE ABA and point four FTE paraprofessional uh in the preschool program at Park Avenue.
Oh, moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, could you poll the committee, please?
Member Naparata?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. The next item on the agenda is a review of the capital improvement plan.
Okay. Here, one more time for you, Lisa.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so another item, as she's pulling this up, is the submission of a capital improvement. Hold on, I gotta change my gallery here. I can't even see the screen myself. I'm gonna close it. All right, so one of the other items that we do need to submit to the town is our capital improvement plan. And so what we want to do this evening is review the submissions that we are looking to put forward. This is due to the town um by February twenty eighth as well, so we can advance to the next slide. Um, just let's, let's, oh, went just a little too far for me. I just want to quickly just ground everyone on where we are with each of the buildings, so a couple of things about this presentation of the improvement plan. It may look a little different than it has looked in the past. A couple of things that we did do is because the Bartlett High School renovation project is kicking off, um, we did have a number of items previously that used to be on here relative to that, so we've stripped out everything for Bartlett High School at this time and really kind of just skinny this down and simplified it. So when we look across our three buildings, but yet four areas, um, for your reference, you have the year that they were opened in here. Um, and as we know, um, as it stands across the district, our 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 oldest building is Webster Middle School, and I think that'll support a lot of what you're gonna see as we move into the capital improvement plan. So let's uh advance to the next um slide. Um, so when we're on here, you will see there's six items uh for Webster Middle School and two for Park Avenue. Um, these items are targeted for completion across three years, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and twenty twenty-six, with the majority of them being targeted for twenty twenty-five. The first item you see on here, which includes um updates or upgrades to controllers across our HVAC system, so um, this is one that would include an upgrade to all the rooftop units, which would enable um our custodian staff um to access those controllers remotely, rather than having to go out on the roof to each unit itself to control them. It would also include um an upgrade to the controller in the boiler room itself, as well as what we call the UNIVENTS, which is the controllers for every individual classroom. Um, we have put in for uh grant funding, we're highly confident that this one will get sourced through grant funding. Um, but we haven't received the official confirmation, but Ms. Prangeli has assured me that we're getting the money. I'm being a little bit more conservative on that one. Um, let me walk you through the other items that we have on here. Um, we do have a need um for some additional paving at Webster Middle School. Now that all of the um folks are coming behind the building um for pickup, you know, that area over time through plowing and and the weather um really does need another coat on top of that. So that's what we have for the paving. That's something that is done by the the DPW. Um, also for Webster Middle School is uh the continuation of the lighting upgrade. We have completed phase one of upgrading our lights to LED lights, but there were two additional phases that were planned to complete this. Phase one was originally funded by um the Green Communities Grant. Um, and so that is an option for us, however, we are working with the town to uh reestablish our green community status, so we can take advantage of that grant funding. So we've been in close communication with the town administrator and assistant town administrator, as well as uh the state rep for that program. Um, there's another option for that one as well, which you can actually build this into your um your bill and you do it um on bill payback, right? So they build that in as an operational expense. Um, so we we have some options, um or it goes in with the town for consideration um with the additional funding. But I I believe um, given the fact that we think we have these other options, um while this is a priority of a medium, um, we are going to consider that as a lower one because of the other funding options. Um, and I say lower, the other trade-off of this is there's significant savings that we would see from this effort as well in terms of uh reducing and driving, well, creating more efficiency and driving down costs. Um, also on here is um window replacement at Webster Middle School. You'll notice if you drive by, you see some fogging in those windows. That's the gas that's um released in there impacting our thermal layer. Um, we do have funding for that, that we received through a town appropriation at uh last May's town meeting. Um, and the supplemental cost for that would come from the HVAC grant that we um applied for. Um, few other ones for Webster Middle School, um, there is a need to upgrade the sound system in the gym. Um, that is particularly important when we assemble the entire school or we have parents in. Um, that sound system um is in need of an upgrade so that you get some clarity um in that room, given how high those ceilings are. Also at Webster Middle School, um is again, going back to our HVAC system, is a need to change out the glycol, an important item that you need to do um in the system to keep it running effectively and efficiently. Um, and then we have an additional item, um which is needed on some of the breakout rooms um with the staff that we have across the district, the need for state for state um space for them is important and creating some level of privacy is particularly important, so that's what that item is. Um, and then the other two items are at Park Avenue. Um, given the design of that building, our security cameras that we have positioned across the building don't give full visibility, especially where it bends out in some of the corners. Um, so there is a desire from a safety standpoint to be able to expand the cameras both internally and externally um around that building. Um, and then lastly, um, a need to install some bleachers slash risers in the gym. Again, when we do assemble parents, um, you know, unless they're in the cafeteria um and we set them up on those small tables, if they do assemble in the gym, there's really no place for them to sit when we bring large groups of people in for events um and um meetings as such. So um, this is the overall plan that we've developed. You will see we're keeping with um how it has been done in the past in terms of classifying the types of need in the program across three categories, which are um you know, ener- energy and efficiency, then there's compliance and safety, and then lastly is handicap accessibility. Um, so the majority of ours are falling into the energy and efficiency category with the exception of the cameras at Park Ave, which is really being driven from a safety uh standpoint. So overall, the total of these are um over one million dollars. Um, and we wanted to um talk about these with you, see if you had any questions relative to this. Um, as I mentioned, we would hold back on the ones that we believe we'd be getting um funding from an additional source and move forward with the others. Think that covers the needs that we have from a capital standpoint at this time. Any questions from anyone? Or additional comments that um either the superintendent or the the building principals want to add um if I didn't adequately cover it? I.
Heidi?
Yep. I just also wanted to point out, um, the doors on the breakout rooms are actually more important for safety than for privacy, um because in a
Are actually more important for safety than for privacy, um, because in a. Any kind of, uh, fire alarm or any safety, uh, concerns, we don't have doors on those spaces.
Thank you. And the only thing I will point out from a funding source is that what the town has been doing is they have been, um. Funding capital items, they've been looking at free cash to do that. So depending on what the situation is this year, they prioritize across the town their capital needs. Um, and they address them with free cash. They go to town meeting and, uh, will address them with free cash.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying that. Are there any other questions or comments from the committee with regard to the capital improvement plan? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the capital improvement plan as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, Lori, could you please poll the committee? You're muted, Lori.
Thanks, member Naparada?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui.
Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the approval or the discussion and hopefully eventual approval of an overnight field trip. The BHS DECA team to the state's competition.
Yes, as Mr. Collins has stated earlier, the DECA club is requesting permission. Um, to go to the state competition in Boston and will be spending the night, um, do you have anything you want to add, Mr. Collins?
No, other than you all know this already, they're a great group of students who have worked very, very hard and they do this yearly. So I know that we're all in the same camp of support. So you know that they'll behave themselves very well, as I've said to the parents already, so. It's an amazing opportunity for them to grow and connect, so I feel confident.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, yeah, the DECA, the DECA club always does us proud, so, um, glad to see them going on to states. Are there any questions or comments from the committee about this overnight field trip? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, Lori, could you poll the committee, please?
Member Naparada?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui.
Yes, motion passes and best of luck to the DECA club, can't wait to hear how they do, I'm sure they'll do great. The next item on the agenda is the discussion of an out-of-state field trip, the class of twenty twenty-four going to High Meadows in Granby. Granby, Connecticut, Mr. Collins?
Yes, sorry, I was technology there, turning back on as well. So this is a yearly event, as you know, classes throughout the year have, uh, utilized the same space and place. We are again confident of their ability to go there and, uh, represent Webster well. So I would ask that we support them and, uh, we do have new returning, excuse me, not new, but, uh, returning. Senior advisors, people that have done it before, so, uh, it, the trip is. Mainstay over the years, it hasn't changed too much, so I feel very confident and I'm excited that they'll be able to go and have this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Any questions or comments from the committee about this out-of-state field trip? No, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, out-of-state field trip for the class of twenty twenty-four to High Meadows in Granby, Connecticut.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, Lori, could you poll the committee, please?
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Naparada?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui.
Yes, motion passes, sure they'll have a great time, can't wait to hear all about it. Hopefully Mohammed will bring it with his updates, um, and the next item on the agenda is the approval of an overnight field trip. The BHS Student Council is going to the MAS C Annual Conference on Cape Cod.
Ryan, you want to take this one, also? Oh, he's gonna hear, uh, I'll take it.
Sorry, I got it, there it is. My internet connection, it wouldn't turn on and off, I'm not sure. Uh, yes, so again, uh, well-planned by our staff that are doing this event. This is an amazing opportunity, so last year we were. Fortunate to be able to raise enough money for the kiddos to be able to go. This year, we are short a little bit of money, but I'm asking that we get it approved as I am working to either, A. Work with the sponsors and the students to fundraise enough money and/or. Hopefully find some partnerships of people that would want to sponsor them, we're about twenty-eight. Twenty-eight to three thousand dollars short right now, which seems like a lot, but they have a little bit of time to fundraise, but we are definitely trying to get it approved. So that we can get these kiddos registered, this was a great leadership opportunity, it really showed the students a lot, Ms. Dordy. Has advocated to be able to go back and I am, uh, firmly in support of her being able to do so. I just need to figure out the other end, but I'm asking for support and approval of this trip at this time.
It sounds a good, great opportunity, I know the students took a lot from this, I think it was last year, correct, that they went?
Yep, and, uh, we got to send a lot last year, so I wanted to capitalize on sending quite a few students this time as well. It's just this group doesn't have quite as much money saved, so it's gonna be a little more difficult, but we're definitely gonna work hard to get them there.
Oh, great. Are there any questions or comments from the committee about this field trip? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve this overnight field trip, the BHS Student Council to the MAS C Annual Conference on Cape Cod.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, Lori, would you poll the committee, please?
Member Mallett?
Yeah.
Member Naparada?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui.
Yes, motion passes, can't wait to hear about this also in future meetings. And the next item on the agenda is, uh, policy E E B A A. Multi-function School Activity Vehicle, this is the first reading of this policy.
Thank you. As you see in your packet, you have a copy of the policy, this is in response to the purchase of our multi-function school activity vehicle use policy. Um. We have, I would like to say we created this from scratch, but we have borrowed, um, from other districts. Um, and have this here for your approval, I'm just a little sad that we're a little, we're not gonna be in time. Because I know Melinda was looking to potentially use the bus if she goes on her trip and it won't be quite done yet. Um, so she's gonna miss it for this year, but, um, hopefully we'll have it ready for future use. But thank you for sticking with us tonight, I know it's been a long meeting and I haven't saw that many on, so I appreciate it.
Well, thank you for putting together this policy, it looks very comprehensive. I'm wondering, I want to open it up to, uh, the committee to see if there's any input, any thoughts or feedback with regard to this policy? No, okay, well, it's only the first reading, so no, uh, no motion necessary, but wanted to open it up for feedback. The next item on the agenda is a review transfer signing of warrants, bills, payroll and vouchers, we obviously won't be signing, we need some design needs to come in, Mrs. Parenti?
Um, yes, yep.
Um, and we do have a request to amend the transfer request from back on January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Uh, from the Webster Middle School Student Activity Savings Account to the checking account, and I'm just navigating to that transfer. So the, the request is to transfer four thousand seven hundred forty-four dollars and sixteen cents. From the Webster Five-Cent Savings Bank, uh, Student Activity Account to the. Webster Credit Union Student Activity Account. Any questions about that transfer request? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, Lori, could you poll the committee, please?
Member Naparada?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui.
Yes, motion passes. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, Lori, would you poll the committee, please?
Member Naparada?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui.
Yes, meeting adjourned, good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone, that was a long meeting, thank you.
Thank you.